On Wednesday, October 20th. And I believe everybody that needs to be here is here. So, welcome, everybody, and thank you for joining us this evening. So, let's open up, I think, before we start. Does anybody have any communications? They'd like to share? Seeing and hearing none. Let's move on to the next agenda item. Is it approval of the October 14th, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes? They have a motion.
I'd vote for approval.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll second.
You. Does anybody have any comments or corrections or anything else for those minutes?
Just one correction. The date at the top. It says October 214.
Let me look at that. Oh, so you're right. They have an extra two in there, so.
Yeah.
I don't know. Good eye, Joyce.
A long month, but not that long.
Pardon?
It's been a long month, but not that long.
214 days, and that was only half the month there, Ben. That would be a very long month. Does anybody else? Anybody else seen any typos or edits? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries. So, the next item on our agenda is the 2022 City of Stoughton Operating Budget Summary. The changes from October 14th. The OWR Cow Meeting. I really don't like to refer to us as cows, but Cow Meeting. Jamin wanted to take that on.
Sure. Since we don't take a roll, I just want to confirm that Jean Legaki, Brad Hunt, and Lisa Reeves are currently not present.
Correct. Thank you.
All right. Yeah, so Council President Hirsch, if you're okay, I'll just kind of jump into the presentation and just have folks kind of jump in with questions, comments, concerns as we go through this.
Sure, that sounds fantastic.
Okay. All right. Almost everybody was here last week with the exception of Alderbin, I guess. I'll kind of just breeze through the changes. I'm not going to touch on every single slide. But if anybody, you know, wants to revisit anything from last week or has any questions that came up, since you saw it last week versus this week, you know, we can certainly jump on that. But I'll just kind of touch on the high-level changes, the, you know, scope of the meeting and the overall objectives of what we're trying to get at here. So again, last week, we presented Senior Center Clerk, Public Works, Law Enforcement Library, and then Human Resources and Risk Management. Tonight, we'll be going through the Opera House, the Planning Inspection Buildings Departments, Recreation, IT Media Services, Fire EMS, Stormwater, and then Finance Mayor, and then a number of general departments, like, you know, counsel, judicial, legal, things like that, pretty quick budgets that we need to get through. And then I think at the end, if anybody wants to touch on any of the other funds that we don't technically go through in the workshops, I'd be happy to pull that information up, you know, whether it's the Death Service Fund, the Capital Projects Funds, or any of the TIF funds, if you want to see those or walk through that, we certainly can. And then I guess it's up to the Committee of the Whole at that point if they want to have a third meeting. If there's any proposed changes or want to review anything or just take another crack at it. But we'll decide that at the end of the meeting. Okay, so changes since the October 14th Committee of the Whole Meeting. We did meet. I guess we met last Thursday, so right away on Friday morning internally, a few of us got together and kind of scrubbed through the utilities budgets, kind of highlighted any buildings that maybe we saw where changes were downward. We brought those back up, looked at some of the more energy-efficient buildings, determined if a change was needed or not. But at the end of the day, we ended up increasing the building utilities cost by about 5.77% over the information that was originally presented. And it represents about a 4% increase over the 2021 budgeted amount. So we did sit down for a while on Friday morning and finish that piece of it based on a recommendation that came out of last week's Committee of the Whole Meeting. The total budget for utilities and vehicle fuel, I decided to kind of look at that and see what has actually happened over the 21 budgeted amounts. So we did increase that by about 6% total when we combined all of the building utilities plus vehicle fuels. We saw about a 6% increase over the 2021 budgeted amount. Because of that change, we really because we're bumping up against that expenditure restraint part or calculation, which I'll touch on a little bit later when we go through this. We did have to reduce the cost of living adjustment, so the overall impact was moving that downward from 3.35% to about 3.1%, and it represents approximately $13,000, give or take. That was the only change that we made internally. Does anybody have any questions, comments, concerns, think that we missed anything in terms of changes that were asked to be looked at?
I guess I have a question. I mean, how did utilities, if we're trying to be more energy-efficient, where did the increase come from? Is that just the rates that have gone up? Where do you anticipate? Because last year, a lot of people were working from home for a few months that lights weren't on. What's? Do you have a better explanation of the increase?
Well, the 2021 budget amount didn't really reflect any of the COVID impacts. We kind of entered that budgeting period as if COVID was going to be gone. It was the safest way to kind of approach this in terms of expenditures. And then we laid the buildings side by side and some of the more energy-efficient buildings that we've been looking at, like Public Works, you know, any of the buildings with the new boilers. We left those pretty well flat to the 2021 budgeted amount. And then we just, we settled on basically a 3% contingency on the other less efficient buildings, if you will, that were identified and increased that over the 2021 budgeted amount. And that's kind of how we ended up at the overall increase of 4%. Is there an exact science to it? No, the discussion that was held at the meeting last week was, you know, that nationally, they're seeing natural gas costs go up. It's hard to tie that to what may happen in the Midwest specifically. But again, we have been seeing vehicle fuel costs go up. The overall picture, I guess, if you will, of utilities is that it's going to go up. So this wasn't an exact science. We just kind of went through and looked at the buildings that we thought may need a contingency increase and which ones we thought could stay flat to the 2021 budgeted amount.
If I could just add, there was notably some boiler replacements that are currently in the works. As you know, last council meeting, we approved replacement of the boilers at the Senior Center, improved efficiencies of those, as well as City Hall is scheduled to be replaced yet this year. So both of those are increasing in efficiencies. We think that'll offset some of the increase in natural gas prices for those facilities. In addition, we've expanded our digital control system to cover the youth center. And so we monitor those occupied times better than we had been in the past in some of those locations as well.
Thank you, Rodney. I mean, that's a great explanation. Before we move on, does anybody else have any questions or concerns? I guess, to me, I have to keep in the back of the mind that, you know, we're reducing the cost of living from 3.35 to 3.10. And if there's someplace that we could make up that 13,000, that would be a good thing. So, move on.
So again, just the only driving factor that really changed at this point is that the placeholder of 3.10% wage increase. None of the information from last week has changed. Kind of skip over the not due instructions. So again, any outstanding information? So again, we'll finalize the cost of living adjustments based on what the Committee of the Whole decides. We'll touch on a couple of the staffing requests that were approved by personnel tonight, and that will be the remainder of them. I think we talked about one last week. The final expenditure restraint parameters, I kind of touched on that last week. But, you know, they are final, but again, because they issued the CIP or CPI index so early this year, I'm kind of just waiting for another week or two to feel 100% comfortable with where the DOR ends up, that they don't hit us with a surprise and say, oops, we gave you the wrong number. So I'm comfortable with that number, but it just made me a little nervous that they got the information out so early this year, because that's not generally like the Department of Revenue. Finalizing the fire billing amounts to the township, again, that's, everything's in there and the information you have in front of you this evening. Again, if there's any changes in the fire expense budget, excuse me, that will change the township billing, so we just finalize that after any changes are made. Final Statement of Assessment from the DOR that will determine the final mill rate. We generally kind of play with the death service adjustments in terms of now how much excess funding in our death service fund do we have to kind of play with that mill rate and make any changes palatable. They were supposed to start kicking those out. I think they said they were. They were starting to calculate those last Monday, and generally, they kick them out in phases, but they haven't sent anything out yet at this point in time. So we're still waiting on that. Maybe they'll just kick everybody's Final Statement of Assessment out at the same time. We'll certainly have it before the final budget comes on November 9th. But as of right now, we're still waiting on that information. And then again, finalize the transit budget following the receipt of the October invoice. Kind of just at least get another month's worth of information in there to kind of see what happened this year in terms of ridership hours, things like that, and see if there's any tweaks that need to be made to the taxi budget, if you will. Like I said, I'll just kind of scroll down here and touch on where we're at. So the other big piece, obviously, is the expenditure restraint impact. As of right now, we're allowed the 3.8%. We're at 3.79% in our calculation in our budget. So again, we're kind of at that point in the budgeting process where if we see any costs go up, we have to knock expenses down somewhere else. So again, we have approximately $1,100 in allowable expenditures yet to be budgeted, or that could potentially be budgeted. We don't have anything in mind that we would use that for, but we do have a little bit of room if something does come up. Not a ton of room, you know, in the scheme of, you know, I guess, what is the actual operating number we used for this? So in the scheme of about $11.1 million, we're down to $1,100 in allowable expenditure restraint room. So pretty close there, not much wiggle room at this point. See if there's anything else we should touch on that's major. Again, I did update this slide a little bit from last week just to kind of address the payroll increase and benefits increases and things like that based on the changes that we made, so you can see what happened with everything. So total payroll increase, which is salaries, wages, and part-time seasonal wages, things like that, that went up 4.53%. You can see where the salaries and wages are at right now at 5.51%. We did make some decreases to volunteer payments just based on historically what we've paid out. Now that we cut the budget, we just kind of tied it a little bit closer to what we've seen historically. Little bit of an increase in overtime overall, and then part-time and seasonal wages. We did see a decrease there as well. So overall, wages, salaries, part-time went up $235,500. The payroll benefits was up 4.04%, and none of the other change, other numbers changed since last week. I guess I did kind of update this slide. So again, kind of that second bullet point that we're tentatively planning to bring a request to fund the technology fund at the December council meeting. I've now started forecasting out and projecting where I think we're going to end for 2021. Again, at this point, that's only through September. So as we continue through October and November, we'll have a much better idea in terms of where we're going to end up overall and kind of where we can spend against some of the excess unassigned fund balance. But again, this will depend on the forecasting operating results and then the contingency funding policy. If you remember last week when we chatted, we did not budget a contingency, because for all intents and purposes, it's really just pulling out of assigned fund balance anyway when you spend against that. So to build a little bit of room within the expenditure restraint and not really budget a number that it should be an expense, it's really just kind of pulling from your savings account to kind of fund the contingent expenses. The Committee of the Whole will have to decide if they want to fund that or actually budget that amount within the budget or create a policy that will set that number. We would then reserve that amount within our fund balance and set up kind of a spending policy against that. So that's a decision that needs to be made in terms of what that excess unassigned fund balance will really look like at year-end. So again, debt limit didn't change, but I'll just touch on it again. We've been seeing that reduction here since 2019. We've been ticking that down, which is good news. Percentage of levy right now, again, this is just kind of an estimate, estimate based on the final mill rate. The overall policy says we remain below 40% of the total levy. As of right now, we're at 36%. Again, just another big thanks to the department heads. We had some follow-up this week. They do put a ton of time into this, so I appreciate that. And again, all you folks kind of giving up, I guess, adding another meeting to your schedule. I know this time of year gets jam-packed with meetings, so I do appreciate everybody taking time and listening to me talk through this. So overall objectives and what we want to do tonight. We'll go through the remaining department and fund budgets, similar to what we did last week. Again, kind of finalize that cost of living wage increase, confirm the recommendations from the Personnel Committee in terms of staffing additions, and then provide direction on whether or not to budget that contingency spending or establish a formal policy. And then, I guess, at the end of the day, determine if a third budget workshop meeting is needed or not. So that's really all I planned on covering through the kind of executive presentation, since not much has changed. But again, I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
Anybody have any questions at this time? Seeing and hearing none. I think we can move on.
Okay, so the next item would be kind of starting down the scheduled department and fund the operating budgets. Again, Council President Hirsch, if you're okay, we'll just kind of jump into them and go through them. And, you know, if anybody has any questions as we go through this, please feel free to jump in. That works for everyone.
Yeah, I think last week, we paused in between each one, and that gives people time to ask questions. I think that works well. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So again, I will, I'll kind of do the spreadsheet thing. I think it works a little bit, just to kind of, it works a little better, just to kind of move things around. Not trying to mess with the PDF, they're not the easiest documents to kind of mess with. So I believe Bill has a show tonight, so we put him first on the hot seat, so he can get out of here and go take care of his business. I'll just touch on a few things here. Not a whole lot on the Opera House, so I'll kind of just leave any questions, you know, open to Bill once I get done with my little spiel here. At the end of the day, we saw wages go up about 2.8% or $5,400. There was just a slight reduction from that 3.10% because they did kind of restructure the wage structure, if you will, between the two non-salaried positions there last year. So it didn't quite work out to 3.1%. It came up to 2.8%. Health and dental is actually down about 12.6% or 5,700. We did see a change in the election from Employee Plus Spouse and Family Dental down to Single for both, so we saw a pretty significant reduction there. And then benefits and negligible increase of about 1.5% or $400. So again, payroll kind of.
James, the one you have up there talks about ticket sales estimated revenues. I don't see where.
Yeah, I'm not, I'll let Bob kind of speak to those. So your salaries and everything are down here.
Right, I just didn't know if you meant to make sure that we could see those or not.
Oh, no, I was just reading out my sheet, but I can pull it down to the expenditures. Nonlabor went up about 5% or 9,200. And again, the way I look at this is I really kind of isolate in terms of my analysis and kind of what I really dig into is kind of what I would call like non-event type costs. So again, this column is 22 requested. This column is kind of what we decided on after we had the meetings with everybody, and then the 21 budget is right next to it. So kind of focusing on this middle column here that I have shaded. So when I, in case of the Opera House, when I talk about nonlabor costs, I'll kind of highlight these real quick. I guess, we'll go from here. When I talk about non-event type costs, it's really this area here that I just highlighted in yellow. These costs down here really kind of follow along with the shows and are kind of built in with the contracts that Bill puts together and things like that. So he's a little better equipped to speak to those. Really, the costs I dig into in terms of nonlabor would be this section here. So if I say the numbers, and they seem a little off from the total, that's why, because I'm really only looking at those at this point. So when I say nonlabor went up by 5% or 9,200, it's really just that bucket of costs that I'm looking at and speaking to right now. And really, the biggest jump there over the 2021 budget you can see is basically this ads and publication line. So we had $90,000 budgeted for 22 versus 80 last year. So that's basically the reason for the biggest jump in the nonlabor costs. If we move up to the revenues, again, Bill kind of sets these costs up here, I guess I'll highlight them. So again, he has a better handle on what shows he thinks will be scheduled, knows will be scheduled, kind of what the revenues will be, what the ticket sales will be like. So I can't really provide a lot of input on those, but the one revenue item I will touch on is the transfer from the general fund. So when Bill first put this together, he really kind of put together a balanced budget, if you will, with a transfer in from the general fund of about $210,000. There's kind of been an unwritten rule that the transfer in from the city will cover two of the Opera House positions. And I believe that amount actually equated to about $172,000 this year, something like that. So rather than agree to the full 210, we sat down and kind of discussed just leaving that transfer in static at this point compared to 2021. So we did leave it at $195,000. If you all remember, Bob's, or Bill's done a really, really nice job with pursuing grants. I think he got a fairly significant one at the end of 2020. I think that was around $136,000. And then he picked up two more pretty big grants this year as well. So we did see kind of a big shift in terms of where their overall fund balance is this year compared to where we were last year at this point in time. Last year, we were looking at a negative fund balance, and this year, we're looking at a positive fund balance to the tune of a couple hundred thousand dollars at this point in time. So we're not quite in the same position that we were last year, and that's the reasoning behind keeping that transfer static at this point in time. It's still over and above kind of the unwritten agreement that the city will fund those two positions, but we felt it was prudent to not reduce that and at least keep it static at this point, but not go all the way up to the $210,000. So that's really all I had prepared for the Opera House. But again, Bill is here. If anybody has any specific questions, maybe talking about the shows or the event expenses or something like that.
Anybody have any questions? I guess I have a couple, Bill. When you got these grants, what were they for and how were they spent? I think some of them were for renovations, but just it'd be nice to know, because not all of us are on Opera House Committee.
You know, it's a, it's a, there's a lot of them. So there's a collection of different things that they were meant for. Some of them that I talk about actually came to the Friends Association that is SOFA. They largely do capital improvements. So we got, so SOFA received some grants for the renovations on the first floor of the building and a few different ones over the course of time. Then we got some major donations for that stuff. And then also recently, a major donation to do $40,000 in matching funds on a seat cushioning project that we think is going to move forward. So that's kind of exciting for a lot of people who come to shows. But the big ones that Jamin is talking about would be in 2020, there was 136,000 that came in from the Department of Administration in Wisconsin, which was a venue grant that followed off of something that Montana had done for arts venues. That was meant to compensate for lost ticket sales revenues, because our lost revenues were something like, I think it really ended up being like something like 82% lost revenue in ticket sales between 19 and 20. But it would have been worse if it hadn't been for February and the beginning of March. But that was what that was meant for. We ended up being able to spend some money in 2020 because we had a full-time staffer who had only been on a short time and decided to move on with a different, something else in her life, because she was not into riding out the pandemic at a music venue. So that saved us some money, and we spent some of that on the streaming technology that we have in place now. And then there was something called the Save Our Stages Grant, which generated the shuttered venue operators grant. And so a big chunk of money came in from that grant with really specific budget requirements as far as what you're allowed to spend it on, largely on things that you had already spent money on. But we were able to go back in time and find enough expenditures that would qualify that we got a $324,000, I believe is what the number was, from the shuttered venue operators grant. That particular grant, which was in 2021, also entered into a supplemental phase recently. And so we're looking at $162,000 in eligibility from that, which is meant to offset losses in ticket sales for expenditures to contracted employees in terms of guarantees paid to artists. The idea behind all those grants is that they're putting the COVID relief funds into a place where they feel like it's going to get distributed into a broader base of an economic sector, in this case, entertainment. And so we're doing that and that we're redistributing it to the artists and to the businesses in town, in theory, and to the people who are working for those artists, as well as the people who are working here. So those are the big ones. And the, you know, the upside is that we're working with a cushion in a very strange fall. So we're able to think positively about 2022. And also, we're in a better position in that we had time to get our lounge together, potentially creating extra revenue, and also get our streaming system up and running, which has started to create some waves within the concert people and the thing. So overall, you know, we're still working through the pandemic, but I feel like we're in a good place. I think it would be a mistake to look at that money as an alternative to the city money that has been included in the budget. That would definitely be a mistake at this point. But if anybody wants to suggest it, I'd be willing to freak out on you.
Thanks, Phil, and congratulations on all your grants. I know those are a lot of work.
It is a ton, it's crazy how much work it is to keep track of the way. It is a ton. It's crazy how much work it is to keep track of the ways that all that stuff is structured. I'm continuing to pursue other grant opportunities. The state of Wisconsin recently put out another one for venues from some of the American Rescue Plan funds. We may be able to squeak some eligibility out there. So we may see some more coming through in 2021. And I think it's worth mentioning that in 2020 and in 2021, we saw, well, in 2020, we saw almost the membership contributions that we saw in 2019, despite having no shows. And in 2021, we're back, very nearly back to our 2019 levels. So we're seeing the support to keep the Opera House going. So we're going to keep doing that.
That's fantastic. Does anybody have any questions for Bill? Or Jamin on Opera House finances? I don't see anybody. Thank you, Bill, for being with us and sharing what you guys have been up to. Congratulations again on all your funding. That's fantastic.
Thanks, you guys. And we're getting ready for a show. So I'm going to go and see if everything's okay. Thanks.
Thanks, Bob. Okay, so moving along here, we will touch on Director Shields' department. So we'll go through three here. We'll have inspection first, then we'll go through city buildings and then hit planning department as well. I need to stay on the line for when we actually get the stormwater further down. But as of right now, we'll just go through these three that impact the general fund at this point in time. So here's the inspection department. Just high level changes. Wages went up about 3.1%, basically followed the the cost of living adjustment. Health and dental, we saw go up 4.6%. If you remember, the health insurance, the health insurance premiums then go up 5% this year. So that's why we're seeing the pickup there. And benefits went up by 1.3% at this point. Non-labor costs stayed static. Really, at the end of the day, the only non-labor cost is this 50215, the weights and measures costs. We left that static. It's pretty standard from year to year. So again, that's really, really the only thing that changed at this point in time would be the the labor and health and dental costs on the inspection side of things. So pretty straightforward. But does anyone have any questions on inspection?
See anybody? Go for it.
And city buildings. Hold these up a little bit. So city buildings really kind of followed suit as well. Wages we saw go up about 3.1% as well. Health and dental's up 4.74% and benefits went up 0.74%. There is, I believe, a part-time position that that gets budgeted to city buildings that isn't eligible for WRS at this point in time, which is why the benefits don't quite follow suit, kind of similar to what you saw with inspection. That's why the increase is a little bit smaller on the city building side of things. Non-labor went down about 3.41%. And the total change for city buildings basically stayed pretty static. We're at about 0.7% total. City buildings, if you remember, this is when we budgeted or approved a new custodian in 2020. We budgeted that as full-time custodians, the full-time and part-time custodians coming onboard effective 11. We had some challenges getting those position filled, positions filled. So we did, we did see much less than actual costs versus the budget in 2020. But I think those positions are now pretty stable. They've been onboard for quite some time now at this point in time. And I think this this budget should level off and come in much closer in terms of actual the budget at this point in time. But again, the only changes here that we really saw that impact anything related to the wage increase and then the health and dental increase. Any questions on city buildings? Okay. Go to planning. I apologize. I should have blown these up a little bit. I didn't realize what they would look like on the screen. So planning, we did see wage increase overall about 3.71%. The reason that it's a little bit higher than that 3.1 is because we had a little bit of shift in the way we're allocating that labor. So a little bit more ended up coming into the planning departments and the other departments. Health and dental went up about 5.37% for the same reasons. That cost gets allocated kind of based on where the hours go. And we did another full-blown analysis and decided that a little bit more should be going to planning at this point in time. And benefits went up 2.04% at this point in time. The non-labor costs, we saw go up about 41.3% or $13,000. And that really relates to two lines, which I'll kind of highlight, the 22 and 21 budget amounts here. It's the vehicle fuel line. And then you can see the operating expenses line also went up as well, for a total change of about 7.77% overall for the planning department. With that, I don't, I don't have any specifics on the operating expenses, but if Director Shiel wants to add anything, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, we utilize outside inspections for, outside inspection service for commercial electric as well as some assisted, when we have higher demands for house inspections and the like, we're anticipating a larger number of single-family starts next year as well as a solid commercial year. So that increase in the operating expense is principally related to anticipated outside assistance for inspection services.
And Rodney, I suspect that the reason why your vehicle fuel has gone up is because of COVID and you were kind of grounded last year. And now you're, because in 2020 was almost $5,000. So is that what you're anticipating?
Well, we've also retained vehicles that we had originally planned to dispose of or get rid of because of the staff levels that we have, the custodians that we now have on staff utilize the city vehicle. So there's some, some added expense related to the vehicles that we've retained for apartment use.
Anybody else have any questions? Here and none? Go ahead. Oh, Brad, go ahead.
Regina, I was wondering if Jamin or Rodney could answer the salaries. Are those for city employees or are those for the outside inspectors?
Salaries are all related to internal staff.
Okay. Where would the expense for the outside inspectors assistance be shown?
They're shown in that line 5340, the $34,000.
Okay. Gotcha.
Sure.
Thanks, Fred. Anybody else have any questions or need anything clarified? Any none? I guess Jamin, we can move on.
Okay, thank you, Rodney. The next one will be recreation and we'll touch two departments there. So it'll be recreation and then youth center as well. Again, I will just kind of touch on the the high level changes that we noticed. And Director Glenn's on the phone too, to answer any specific questions you might have. So overall, when we look at wages, and I'm really only at this point considering salaries and wages, not this wages, part-time and seasonal temporary, I'll have a separate number for that. But when we look at the salaries and wages lines, basically based on what what changed over 2021, we saw an increase of about 3.25%. Again, some of those wages are allocated between recreation and youth center. So you don't quite see that perfect 3.1%. The part-time seasonal and part and wage, the part-time wages and seasonal temporary, we did decrease about 14.42%. And again, that that's based on what we've been seeing kind of historically, kind of the lingering impacts of COVID. And Director Glenn did a detailed analysis on what these costs should be and what he thinks he should be. And he did note some room that that these could be reduced. So that's why you're seeing a reduction in the seasonal temporary costs at this point in time. Health and dental went up about 4.57%. So basically, following, following the line of the the 5% increase in health insurance. And benefits went down about 2.36%. Again, that kind of followed that reduction with the part-time seasonal and temporary wages. Non-labor's down about 13.04%. There were some minor changes kind of throughout ups and downs and everything. But the one major change that we noted was the outside services contracts that went down about $10,000. And again, I'll just kind of briefly touch on that that changed. I'll let Director Glenn answer any specific questions related to it. The other item that I recommended not budgeting this year is this transfer to other fund. It's kind of a misleading line, if you will. What this is, is the actual kind of swim pond sinking fund. And it's not really, it's basically a reserved amount within our fund balance and it's set up for discretionary spending. So I didn't think it was necessary to really provide a budget for that amount since it is already reserved within our fund balance. And there's discretionary spending that I think Dan then kind of works with Parks and Rec Committee and everything on that. So we do monitor that fund in terms of where it is overall, in terms of balance and everything. And again, to free up a little bit on the expenditure restraint side of things, because it is already reserved within our fund balance, I didn't see it necessary to to actually budget an expense line item for that, because it is tracked within our fund balance. So those are the two big changes on the the non-labor cost side of things. The overall change to the recreation budget went down about 5.9%. Again, it's basically related to the two items that I have highlighted in yellow here. So with that, if anybody has any specific questions, Dan or I will do our best to answer them.
Any questions? Fred, your mic is on. Do you have a question?
No, just we got to turn it off.
Jamin, on that transfer to other fund, was that a yearly transfer to keep that fund healthy? Is that still going on? Or is it just kind of leftover money that's been kept there?
Yeah, the the fund has a sufficient balance to cover the expenditures that have been hitting it. At some point, we'll have to bring it back and ask to fund it out of the unassigned fund balance. But we're not quite to that point right now. So again, based on kind of what we've seen with the expenditures, we felt comfortable not budgeting this. This would, the process would be to bring this back through, when we get to that point, to bring this back through finance and council for approval to transfer funds out of our unassigned fund balance back into this this kind of reserve fund balance, if you will. But looking at the dollars that we've seen historically coming through here, there's no real risk to our unassigned fund balance. You know, if you're talking $6,000, $7,000 every couple of years to fund this back up to a decent level, it really has no impact on our unassigned fund balance. When you, when you look back at the slides here, let's kind of go back to, if I can remember where it was. There we go. In terms of our unassigned fund balance, kind of where we were at the end of 2020, we're basically $564,000 in excess of our our max ceiling of 25%. So again, looking at the small dollar amounts that are generally associated with that sinking fund, I just didn't see it necessary to budget that, need up any expenditure restraint amount where it's not necessary.
Thanks. Somebody else have any questions? All right. Seeing none, I guess we can move on.
Okay, so the last one for Director Glenn will be the youth center. So in the youth center, we saw wages go up about 3.1%. Part-time wages were reduced by 12.37%. But again, in the scheme of things, it's about $2,400. And you can see where they've been trending kind of annually in terms of total costs that we've seen over there. You know, this is kind of a tough one. This is one that's directly impacted by COVID and potentially lingering effects here. So it's something we'll keep an eye on, but it was a pretty small shift downwards in terms of budgeting. But we'll keep an eye on that and see when traffic picks back up at the youth center. Benefits were up just 0.02%, kind of following the wages. And health and dental, we saw kind of follow that 5% increase. The total increase here was 4.72%. Non-labor went up just slightly, 1.55% or $255. So the total change for youth center was about 1.13% overall. So pretty minimal activity within the youth center budget this year.
Again, any questions?
What outside services are no longer being required? Up until 2019, we had 21,000.
So this is the, yeah, this is the never-ending game. And I'll highlight the column you're referring to here. This is the never-ending game with the expenditure restraint side of things. Historically, how this had been budgeted was, so the Friends of the Youth Center pay for all of the the wages and benefits for the full-time position there, I believe is how it's set up. And the way it was set up is the Friends of the Youth Center said, okay, we'll pay this, but the city has to have some skin in the game to the tune of $21,000. So what we were doing was basically budgeting a full revenue amount and budgeting a full expenditure, the $21,000 in expenditures. And when I looked at this, it seemed like we were kind of double counting this on the revenue side as well as the expenditure side of things. So to kind of make some more room on the expenditure restraint side of things, I just approached the Friends of the Youth Center and said, hey, how about we just, you just don't pay us the $21,000 and we don't incur the expense on this side. So we basically reduced our revenues by $21,000 and reduced the expenses by $21,000. Ended up in the same exact place, but freed up $21,000 on the expenditure restraint side of things.
Okay.
Great question, Fred. Anybody else have any questions? All right, seeing none. Let's move on.
All right. Thanks, Dan. Enjoy your time off. What is next? IT, I believe. Okay. So IT, the big one. This is one of the positions that were approved at the Personnel Committee. So wages and salaries you'll see went up about 43.26% or $79,000. Benefits followed suit at 43.41% or $11,100. And then health and dental's up 24.4% or $9,300. One of the position, the position that was approved is basically a senior IT administrator, I think, something like that. John can kind of touch on that once I get through with my piece of it. But again, that's why you see the big jumps here on the IT side of things. The non-labor, we did reduce slightly about 1.3% or $1,700 overall. So the total change for IT at this point is 25.68% up over 2021. And you can kind of see, if you remember how these graphs go, 2022 budget is the far left column. And you can see that blue line, which is all of our basically fully loaded labor wages benefits. You can see that big jump with the addition of the the new position. The reason we felt comfortable leaving non-labor costs pretty static is if you kind of start on the very right-hand column with the orange columns here, you can see where we were at in actual for 2018 of $59,000 versus 88,000 budgeted. 19, we had $65,000 actual versus 92,880 budgeted. So we've kind of been seeing this trend that we've been over budgeting these non-labor costs. And that's why we felt comfortable this year going into the 2022 budget to basically leave that piece static. So the overall big increase in the IT budget this year relates to the addition of the new position. So that's all I had. But again, Director Montgomery's here for any questions you might have.
All right, do you have a question? All right, do you have a question? Fred, do you have a question?
Well, I I was wondering if um. Um, Portman Head Montgomery would mind explaining the benefit of having that additional position. We talked about it at Personnel and it's, I think, pretty evident, but it would be a good idea maybe to uh explain why we need that position. Okay, currently, right now, there is, uh, in effect, one IT person, and that would be me to handle all of the. Service requests, all in the network. Uh, responsibilities, all the end-user responsibilities. Um, for the entire city and it's it's really come down to one person cannot take care of the city. My other gentleman that I have right now is primarily WSTO. And the uh individual I'm looking or the position I'm looking to hire will be more of a uh. Higher level. Sorry about that. Will be a higher, yeah, snuck in there, higher level um uh resource for me on the technical side. In essence, we're going to be breaking it into a, you know, a tier one, tier two, tier three of technical support. Uh, network architecture, implementation, and then user support. Okay, thank you. Welcome.
Any other questions for John or Jamin on this budget? Seeing none, I guess we can move forward. Let's, Fred, you had another question.
Fine.
Okay, so next one up would be fire. Um, let me work my way to that. Apologize for all the scrolling in the spreadsheets. Think it does show up a little better than the PDF though. All right, so um overall, um. Uh, basically the full-time wages here, um, fire has a couple, a couple line items for what I guess what you would classify as wages. So we do have the volunteers part-time. Um, and longevity, basically, when I'm talking about the change right now, I'm really just kind of considering the the full-time salaries and wages, if you will. Um, the two line items that I've highlighted in yellow right now. Um, we did see an increase of about nine point nine seven percent or about nineteen thousand five hundred. Um, again, that was one of the change changes approved by Personnel. I believe we have one of the positions that I want to say fifteen fifteen hundred and sixty hours. Right now, um, the Personnel Committee agreed to move that position to full-time to twenty eighty at this point in time. So that's why you're seeing that big shift in the actual full-time wages. Um, the volunteer wages, again, we did drop about ten thousand dollars, but again, it was based on historical trends and kind of where we think we are in terms of number of volunteers and things like that. Um, we looked at that one pretty closely. It's not that we're cutting that budget. It's just that we're putting it more in line with what we've seen historically at this point in time. Um, benefits went up about five point six nine percent. Again, that's a higher number than we've seen with the other departments, mainly because the one position did jump up to full-time. Um, but health and dental pretty much followed suit at four point seven one percent, um, basically following that line of the five percent increase health and deck or health insurance. Um, non-labors up about twelve point zero seven percent, about thirteen thousand three hundred. Um, that's just due to a couple. Um, line items here that I will. Highlight the big shifts. Um, and I'm sure Chief Rip can. Kind of speak to what these were and why they went up. Let me find the other one. Uh, utilities would increase slightly. Um, so these are really the three line items that we saw, kind of the bigger jumps that kind of gets you up to that thirteen thousand three hundred. There are small shifts with the other accounts too, kind of up and down, but really, these were the big ones that that caught our eye as we were reviewing this budget. We saw utilities, uh, equipment maintenance, and then the subscription and dues go up um over twenty twenty one. Um, so for the total change for the fire department is about four point nine four percent increase over last year's budget. Um, so with that, that's all I have. But again, Chief Rip is here for any specific questions you might have.
So the, just as a note, because I know the uh account five zero two four oh, that's our equipment maintenance budget that uh. That jumped up partly uh just due to realities of what we've been spending on equipment maintenance. And trying to implement some preventative maintenance programs for things. So. Uh, for example, for ISO. Um, we're doing some pump testing uh to where we actually check the ratings of the fire pumps on all of our trucks. Um, ladder testing, we take our ground ladders, uh, have them inspected as well as the aerial truck. Make sure that that is safe for for use by firefighters. Um, as well as a hose testing service to try and free up some time for us as well.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Fred?
Well, it's not a really big item, but that subscription and dues you requested twenty two hundred and. The uh. Formal budget request is twelve thousand two hundred. What additional subscriptions and dues are involved there?
So the twenty two hundred, that was a mistake on uh on my part when I initially filled this out. Uh, my spreadsheet, there was a math error in it. So it was supposed to be twelve two hundred, but.
Okay. That's fine.
And we thought, what a gift. You got ten thousand extra dollars to go.
Good Fireman's Weekly for that.
Caught me on a good day.
All right. Any other questions? For the chief or for Jamin on the fire budget? All right, I guess we can move on. People are pretty quiet.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, everyone.
All right, EMS, um, it's kind of a bigger budget. Again, EMS is one of our, I guess, few L business-type funds or enterprise funds, if you will. Um, so this one doesn't really have a requested or a mayor mayor's budget. We do just kind of work with Lisa to finalize the budget. Um, it's, you know, it's her department. She really kind of knows what the revenues are going to do and what the expenditures are going to do, but I'll just kind of touch high level on. Um, what shifted and changed. And then again, Lee, um, Lisa's here for any specific questions you might have about this one. Um, so the first section here is the revenues. You can see the state Medicare supplement. That stays pretty consistent every single year. Um, the EMS department here, um, this is basically what we charge the townships. It's a fee for service. So it's really, it's a set fee. It's based on the population and percentage of the populations of the townships that are within the service area. Um, and then we have a contract that kind of governs the rates and how much we increase those by each year. So that's what that line item was. Um, so not much fluctuation there. Um, Lisa did reduce her ambulance fees a little bit, I think about fifteen thousand dollars. And you can see this is, it all depends on volume and and where things are at, but she can kind of touch on things. Now, if you look nineteen to twenty actual, you can see it just really ultimately depends on how busy the EMS department is. Um, and you know, it's it's probably a pretty tough job for her to forecast that out, but I'm sure she can speak to that kind of once I get done with my my high-level look at this. Um, moving down to the expenditures. Um, so we did see wages, um, salaries and wages. Again, since they do have some part-time, I'm really only kind of focusing on these two line items here. Um, so salaries and wages, we saw go up about three point one percent. Um, the volunteer wages did reduce just slightly by about a thousand dollars or point six eight percent. Again, this is based on trends and the number of volunteers we have at this point. Uh, benefits were up point five seven percent. Um, health and dental did go up forty two point six one percent, um, that jump here. Um, and that really again comes down to another shift in election, basically going from a single package to employee plus spouse to health and family on the dental side of things. You can see. One life event or shift in an election, um, that really does impact those health insurance costs pretty significantly. Um, so those are kind of the labor costs. Um, total labor did go up about three point eight two percent, give or take. Um, a lot of, a lot of the numbers were kind of up and down here and there, um, but it did ultimately end up being about three point eight two percent. Um, or I'm sorry, non-labor went down three percent. The total labor cost, um, if you add up everything. I was misreading my notes. You basically take everything from salaries all the way down to health insurance. That total increase was about three point eight two percent. Um, the non-labor cost, basically excluding depreciation and some of the other transfers to other funds, that's the one about three percent over twenty twenty one. Um, I'll kind of walk down to the bottom line and kind of explain some of this to you. Um, EMS is kind of a challenge to show in terms of. Budget, what it would really look like in terms of income statement results. Um, because they they really have accounting more like the utilities, if you will. Not everything is cash flow. Um, so if you look at like a specific department within the general fund, all of that is cash flow, right? So if people get like finance department. We pay wages, we pay office supplies, we pay for our auditors, all of that. All of that is like a check being cut to somebody, right? Um, EMS is a little bit different. So when you look at this bottom line of of negative one forty one hundred and forty four thousand seven hundred and sixty six. The goofy thing about this is that's not what your actual bottom line is going to look like in terms of cash flow and also your income statement because of the way things are sometimes. So a big chunk of that is this depreciation. Now, historically, this hadn't been budgeted. I did start budgeting this year just to have that number in there. It doesn't fluctuate much from year to year. The equipment doesn't fluctuate much. But that's a non-cash expenditure, right? So it's not like EMS is going to be paying out more a hundred and forty four thousand dollars more than revenue bringing in. They do have these non-cash type expenditures on their income statement as well. Um, another thing here is this thirty thousand dollar transfer to debt service. Now EMS doesn't have any debt, right? But once upon a time, the debt service fund, our Fund Three Hundred, did front some some payments to EMS to cover EMS's debt issue. Um, we decided this year, since EMS no longer has debt on the books, you can see when that stopped, that was in twenty twenty. I'll kind of highlight that last payment here. Twenty twenty was the last actual debt service payment that EMS had. Um, now now EMS owes our debt service fund, our Three Hundred, about three hundred thousand dollars. So we kind of touched base with Lisa and talked about how are we going to pay this back? Um, and we just decided to basically straight-line amortize it over the next ten years. Um, so that's where Lisa's going to start paying back the debt service fund for the money that was fronted to them. Um, that's, that's an instance of an expense that's actually not going to show up on the income statement. It will be cash flow. They are, they're only showing a liability on their books for thirty thousand dollars. So the EMS accounting. Is always a little bit different in terms of what this final ending number looks like versus what is actually going to look like, but this at least gives you a pretty good idea of kind of. What will be the expenditures that they're going to incur? What will the cash flow look like, things like that? Um, and where really where's the money and where are the expenditures going? But again, this bottom line. Um, don't put too much stock in that in terms of, oh, my gosh, EMS is spending out way more than they're taking in because again, you have that big chunk of depreciation for a hundred thousand dollars. Um, you have some some funding here to their truck fund and their replacement funds, those kind of ebb and flow throughout the years. So in some years, yeah, EMS may take, may spend more than they actually take in. Others year, other years, you'll see they'll actually have profits. You can look at, you know, twenty twenty, twenty nineteen, I even expand this to twenty eighteen. If you look at these bottom lines, that's really where it ended up and you can see where that difference is between, you know, twenty twenty budget, we had thirty eight thousand dollar profit. Um, but twenty twenty actual was a hundred and fifty three thousand dollars. So again. Don't get hung up on this, this number, um, really kind of focus more on kind of what these expenditure lines are saying themselves. Um, hopefully that makes sense and it was kind of a long spiel, but I know it 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 probably is kind of a shock at first when you see that number, but it does, again, it does come down to the final year-end accounting that we have to do on our end. That really kind of makes their bottom line look like what it's going to look like. So. Um, that, that's really all I had prepared for EMS, but again, Lisa's here to answer any specific questions you guys might have.
Anybody have any questions? Lisa, did you want to say anything in regards to the budget at all?
No, um, nothing other than I I wholly. Thank you all for supporting our budget and for uh. Just being there for us. It's been a hard eighteen months. We have. Such phenomenal volunteers and I just want to, I don't know, um. Uh, put that on the record officially because the the they're the ones that have. You know. Made this service what it is and. Uh, yes, budget numbers mean something, but. On the record. Oh, my gosh, um, thank goodness that we have them and. Uh, thank you for giving us the means and resources to do what we do. So we appreciate that. Cool, thank you.
Well, Lisa, we really appreciate you and all your volunteers. I mean. It has been a tough eighteen months and what you guys do and see on a daily basis is heart-wrenching and uh. Just kudos to you and everybody else. Thank you so much.
No, thank you.
And I think uh Jean left something for you in the chat, too.
Yeah.
So, thank you again, and please extend our thanks to your staff and the volunteers. We really do appreciate that, everything you guys do.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments, questions? All right, Jamin. Go ahead.
Okay, next up is Stormwater. Um, Stormwater is again one of our um business-type funds, if you will. So again, accounting is pretty similar to what the utilities would look like and EMS to a point where you have depreciation and things like that. Um, debt issuance, the accounting is a little bit different for those two. Um, where we budget, you know, we budget Stormwater debt as a revenue and we show the payment back as an expense, but at the end of the day, it's all balance sheet accounting. It's not really income statement accounting. So this one always kind of ebbs and flows, busts into ashwells. Uh, but again, we do kind of try to show all of the expenditures and cash flows that will be impacted by the budget at this point. Uh, but at the end of the day, Stormwater rates are are based on the number of equivalent residential units, if you will. Um, so for twenty twenty two, at this point, we're we're estimating uh nine thousand six hundred and thirty nine um equivalent residential units or ERUs. Um, based on the operating costs that we have factored in here, again, some of this is sinking fund. Increases as well, trying to build up like a collection system replacement, equipment replacement, things like that. Um, we're seeing a change in the annual fee per ERU of about three dollars and ninety six cents. So it's basically jumping from seventy seven dollars and eighteen cents per year to eighty one dollars and fifteen cents. Uh, that's roughly five percent over last year. Um, so this is the overall high-level result of the rate. Um, does anybody have any initial thoughts on this? Any questions, comments, concerns on on the direction this is heading? Um, I will say in terms of area Stormwater Utilities, I didn't do an analysis this year, but we did look at it last year. Stoughton's rate is pretty low, um, especially when you start looking at Madison and other surrounding communities. It's. Extremely low and Madison's is absolutely ridiculous. I would say it's even like twice as much for ERU than it is in Stoughton. So this is still. Yeah, not that it's a competition, but it's still a very competitive rate in terms of a storm water water rate for a city. So. Um, even though we're seeing those increases, we do, we do build out a five-year plan for Stormwater similar. Similar to what we do um on the CIP side of things. I think members of that committee, the members seeing all of my graphs and how we're kind of trying to flatten out middle rates on the uh. On the city side of things, we do, we do the same thing for Stormwater as well, too. We really try to flatten these out. Right now, I'm really anticipating this is hopefully the last year where we kind of see that five percent up um increase up. I think we're we're really about to smooth this out to more manageable, kind of, you know, inflationary type increases at this point in time. Um, you know, anything can happen, but we we do try to plan this out kind of on a five-year plan to make sure we're not seeing these huge swings up and down for the rate. Um, so people kind of know what to expect with the Stormwater. Um, I'll I'll touch a little bit on the income statement and everything. Um, again, Stormwater is. A little different animal than what you would see in just a regular general fund, but I'll touch on it a little bit, kind of walk you through what it looks like. a little different animal than what you would see in just a regular general fund, but I'll touch on it a little bit, kind of walk you through what it looks like and then I can answer any questions that come up. Again, it's the 22 mayor budget here on the left and then 21 budget is right next to it. So Stormwater user fees, that basically pulls from the last tab we were looking at, just takes the ERU times the rate and we set this up so it covers the operating expenditures at this point. Stormwater user review fees, yard waste site revenues. And then, as I mentioned, we do show no proceeds as a revenue. But when you think about how you actually do accounting for, for debt issuance for an actual enterprise type fund, you get the cash in and you debit cash on the balance sheet and then you credit a liability on the balance sheet. So when you see the income statement next year, at the end of the year, you're not going to see a note proceeds revenue line because it's all balance sheet accounting. But again, for transparency, we want to at least show this in the budget, what it really looks like and where the sources of funds are coming from and where the uses of the funds are going. So we do budget all in, but again, the bottom line doesn't really look like this when all is said and done. In terms of appropriations, kind of salaries, wages, benefits, health insurance, wages, benefits, health insurance. We did see increase over last year, roughly about 9% all across the board. Again, this really boils down to most of Director Abear's staff. And if you remember when we were touching on his public works budget, he worked pretty closely with, with HR in terms of kind of restructuring that department and determining where, where money, where, where time will be spent. He, he's really anticipating more time kind of being spent on the Stormwater side of things as opposed to streets and parks and things like that. So we did see a bit of a shift up in, in kind of the fully loaded labor cost, if you will, going to Stormwater. But by the same token, we did see non-labor costs go, go down about 2.10%. You know, there's some, some ups and downs kind of throughout, but we did see kind of the, the bigger changes would be, let's see. In the miscellaneous expense, we saw go down about $2,000. Stormwater maintenance, we saw go down about $2,000. And then I think there was one more. I apologize. Nope, that was really about it. Those are the major kind of non-labor costs that went down. And again, kind of just based on trends, what we've been seeing and conversations with Brett to determine if we can, we can move things down or not. But both of these, we, we, we thought it was prudent to move these down and, and not budget more than we actually had to. Again, kind of similar to EMS, we do have this depreciation line, highlight it here. We're, we're going to continue to see this increase as time goes on. We're continually adding Stormwater infrastructure, new Stormwater infrastructure. Anytime a new development comes in and they add in Stormwater infrastructure, the city takes those on as assets. So you're going to continue to see this grow. This is still pretty much a very infant type utility, if you will. It's only about seven, eight years old at this point in time. So this is still not necessarily a work in progress, but you're going to continue to see, you know, fixed asset and that depreciation side of things continue to grow, you know, almost exponentially as time goes on, as the city grows, as more infrastructure is replaced and things like that. Capital infrastructure, this was in the CIP budget. The CIP committee looked at this pretty closely. We have about $508,000 scheduled right now. Oops, sorry. For Stormwater infrastructure next year. That's a pretty big year for Stormwater after this year. I think you're going to see that tail off for the next few years in terms of what's actually in the CIP. Certainly nowhere near $500,000 for the next couple of years. But next year is, is scheduled to be a pretty big year in '22. So we do kind of begin to kind of show you what this, what the difference is with accounting and kind of how this income statement looks. If you kind of look at this transfer to debt service, if you look at the 19 and 20 budgeted amounts, which is this 207862 and 254222, we had those budgeted, right? We paid that exact amount. But if you look at the actual line items, you don't see an actual expense item. Because again, all of this takes place on the balance sheet side of things. But again, for transparency, we like to show where those uses of funds are going. We budget those with, with the understanding that the bottom line for the, the Stormwater utility isn't actually going to look like this because of some of those accounting nuances that we have to adjust at year end. But again, we do like to show this so everybody can kind of see where the money's going and what it's for. So that's really all I had for Stormwater. I don't know, Director Schiel, if you have any comments you want to add to this?
I think I can highlight some of the additional asset, our personnel tasks that Public Works will be doing. You might recall, we did a leaf collection study to help us address some of our Stormwater permit discharge fees. And the major part of that is actually leaf collection as well as street sweeping. So there is a pretty, pretty active program that we utilize to help keep our overall expenses related to our permit allocations down. And that's related to this, the leaf collection program as well as street sweeping. I also think they're, they've ramped up their, their maintenance on the actual infrastructure. So I, I think that's part of the shift in the wages and benefits to, to the proper allocation of their staffing.
Anybody have any questions? Brad, thanks.
Two items, the ERUs are going to go up from 2021 to 2022 about 279 additional ERUs. Is the 508,000 in the capital improvement fund related to those ERUs requiring new sewer lines or new additional additions to the system?
No, no, it's not actually. The new ERUs, every single family home is one ERU. Commercial and or multifamily or industry, they have larger impervious surface areas. So oftentimes they're more than that. But the, the capital expenditures are principally related to reconstruction of existing storm sewer. We've got a major street project in Academy Street and some other areas where we're improving or, or correcting or replacing existing storm sewer. It's not necessarily to expand it to new areas. As Jamin highlighted, generally the new developments, those storm sewer infrastructure components are put in along with that new development. Not that, I mean, TIF may be a part of that, but generally that's funded, like in Noric Ridge, it's funded by the developer completely. We then accept it as, as an asset and maintain it going forward.
Okay. Alrighty.
Great question. Anybody else have any other questions? Thanks Rodney for your explanation and thanks Jamin. I guess we can move on.
Okay, we are in the home stretch. So this will be kind of the hodgepodge of departments really in the general fund that I guess for all intents and purposes, you can say I am responsible for. So we'll just kind of go through these one by one. Kind of start wrapping this up here. So the first one is legislative here. This is the council, for all intents and purposes. You can see this budget basically stayed static at this point in time. So not much here, but certainly if anybody has any questions, we can, we can answer them.
So, do you know, I mean, not saying that we need a raise or anything, but when was the last time the salaries of the council actually changed?
About 10 years ago, Regina.
Oh, it's been 10 years. Okay.
About 10 years ago, yep.
No, I mean, at one point. Are we? No, I mean, like I said, I mean, if there was room in the budget, it would have been nice to get a little change it a little bit. Seems how it has been 10 years. And when I was talking to the mayor about this, I was talking about how we as people move on and we're trying to get new blood to join council, if that would be beneficial to have a little bit more compensation, especially with all the committees in time that people are putting on, but since. Go ahead.
For you Regina. So, okay. The council members are considered city employees because they're being paid. And part of that you can, is proof of that is, I believe they're eligible for the using the health, healthcare facility for exercising and things like that over at, on the, in the town. So we give a three, we, we give a, every time we do the budget, salaries go up. We, we, you know, this time it's 3.1%. Last year it was 2. something, whatever. Why isn't the council included in that budget? Cause you know, really, when you think about it, if it hasn't gone up in 10 years, 3% a year. So you're, this, this council is working for, you know, they've lost a third of, of what the compensation would be basically originally was intended to be. Just a statement.
No, I mean, that's why I was asking the question. I mean, I'm not saying that I'm necessarily asking for more money, but I'm just talking that it's, it's really disheartening. I know that we've been having tight budgets, but if we want to continue to have the quality of people serving, we have to value their time and on it.
Absolutely. And so here's, here's, here's your opportunity right now. I mean, you can, you can, you can attach, you can attach to the, to the pay increase of, of city employees, this council, if you wish. This, you know, we're, we're voting on this, you know, we, we basically give the yes or no. You know, the seat, the, the mail is, the mayor is proposing and we can, we can do amendments. And we do the finalize, finalize vote. I mean, it's, so it's entirely up to you.
No, it's not up to me. It's up to us.
Well, it's up to, it's up to you. You can give that motion.
Right. Well, you can give that motion too. You're part of this body. I guess I would like to open that up for discussion since how we have the majority of our council here. I, I never do anything unilaterally. I like to solicit people's ideas and their opinions before I would ever make a decision. So I'm opening up the floor to get your opinions and ideas. Jean.
I love what you're thinking Regina. I, I believe in a just wage, all kinds of places. But no, take the butt away. And I also want to say that I believe until we're better right size and have other key positions funded, I would like to look for ways perhaps to build up the council positions and their, and their potential reimbursement. Not through this budgeting process, but perhaps through other creative ways. I, I feel very strongly about some of these positions and I understand how tight this is. I, most of us who get into this are, well, at least I can only speak for myself. I appreciate that stipend monthly. I don't have to pick up extra shifts at my other full-time job. And so that's kind of where I'm coming from on it. I, I, I think we have a long ways to go and I think we should look in other avenues for more reward. Thank you.
Joyce, I see your mic is on. Did you have a comment?
Yeah, I know, I know that not everyone is in the same situation that I am, but having some sort of salary is at the bottom of my list for why I wanted to join council. And, and actually, you know, I was, I was sort of surprised at that. I consider this a public service. It's the, one of the most gratifying situations I've ever experienced. So I, yeah, I'm, I'm not keen on even the stipend we do have. I think it's great to cover some of the expenses though. I mean, people do have expenses related to serving. But that, I just wanted, I just wanted to point that out.
Okay, thank you Joyce. Greg and Fred, your mics are on. Did you have a comment?
I, I hesitate to even say this because I, I yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm going to just shut up.
No. We tell you your, your, your thoughts Greg. So, you know, this is a safe place.
Yeah, it, well, I, the thing is, is I don't advocate what I'm going to say. It's, you were asking for, for thinking outside the box, you know, other things that we could do. One of the things that we could do is if we reduce the number of alders from 12 to nine, you could then increase the pay from 3,600 to 4,800. Just a thought.
All right. It's an idea, but you're adding a lot more work for those nine people.
Absolutely. And that's why I'm, that's why I'm endorsing it.
Fred, your mic is on and I know you're thinking.
Actually, when I chose to try to become a part of the council, I was thinking very much like Joyce. I just wanted to, you know, try to do some community service and wasn't concerned about the wage. Pleasantly surprised when I found out we got paid actually, but I'm retired, so I have all the time in the world. For those who are working other situations, this is quite an extra workload. So it wouldn't offend me if it was increased somewhat, because I think some people are really blending it or melding it into their other work world and it's quite a bit of work.
See those thoughts? Other council members who haven't chimed in, what are your thoughts?
I've always thought along the same lines as Joyce did too, that between serving on the school board before that, I'm sure Fred will, will say the same thing. It's, it is, it's a reward in itself. It, it is a lot of work, but we, we do see a lot of, a lot of positives that come out of this. So I wouldn't be in any giant hurry to increase it as it is.
Thank you.
I would agree that it's, it's always been, you know, kind of a token amount that sorry, my daughter is playing with a noisy toy. That it's, it's been a token amount and increasing a token amount by 3% doesn't have much impact one way or another, you know?
Thank you. Ozzy and Phil, I think you're the two that haven't spoken yet.
Well, I would agree with that Joyce and Fred. Brett is so, and we've already got this, if it's something you want to look at, it could be looked at next year. But as long as this budget is, as far along as it is, it should have been brought up earlier, I think.
Oh, it was to the mayor. It just didn't make the budget. I brought it up too.
You didn't run it through personnel. That's why it didn't get anywhere.
There you go. So didn't get there. Phil, did you have any comments? Didn't get there. It, Phil, did you have any comments?
Yeah, I mean, I I guess I I generally agree with with. Everybody else's thoughts, you know, and what Joyce said about it, you know. Doing this. Is kind of its own reward. I'm just kind of thinking about if we. Wanted to attract other people because I know in the past, there's been times where. Seemed like there weren't people interested. In trying to have a go and if it would attract. You know. What impact it would have. If it would attract. More diverse people, other folks that had thought about it, but then thought, oh, that's not really. Worth doing or they couldn't squeeze it in or. You know, just kind of wondering what impact the the. A small increase would have, but. Every year that it isn't increased. You know, if it's going on a decade now, then. You know, might be looked at as like, well, now it's, it's like really way behind, but it just depends on how much. How somebody values it and how they look at what. What it is that we do. So. My thoughts.
No, I greatly appreciate it because I was in that line of thinking, I mean. When I first got on council, I. Some of you, I didn't even know that we got paid, so I was pleasantly surprised. But if we are gonna try to be more inclusive and as Jean says. For some of us. It stops us from having to get a second. Job or extra hours. But if we keep on going or we don't. The value of what we're doing is going down every year. And so are we ever gonna attract anybody else if we put so little value? On what we do. And. You know, like you said, if if people. Are we only then attracting people who are financially secure? That this becomes a very privileged. Council. And so that's where I'm concerned about this is that. We're now pretty elite. We all have good jobs or retired and have good benefits. But are we representing the people that do not because they're not? Able to. Be on the council because it doesn't. Offer any. Uh, kind of cushion. To their income. If they had to forego another job or other hour, extra hours because of time commitment. So I'm okay with leaving it this year, but I really think this needs to go to personnel and C A C P. I think it. Really needs to be thought of if we are going to. Follow. What we say before about being inclusive and equitable. It's not necessarily for us, but how do we? Get. And encourage other people to join us. We don't even value what we do.
Regina, could we um act, maybe look at other communities the way you did for. Um, you know, some of the the committee work, you know, that are are um. The aspects of the committees and various communities, could we look at the. Structure that they have or, you know, maybe there's some creative ideas there. I actually um have been thinking that. The new um open openness of the committees to community members. Is going to be a great source of people who would be willing to serve on council. So, yeah, I guess I'd like to know, know what people with some more experience um have found.
Yeah, I mean, but we can't just keep on asking more community members to put in time for free. And expect that that's how we're gonna get our.
Yeah, no, I just think that there will be some who are inspired by their work is all. But I I guess I I'm wondering what Fitchburg and Oregon and um, you know, the list of of. Communities we often check in Dane County to see what arrangements they have. Or maybe we know, I I guess I'd be interested to know.
Respect to pay structure or respect to responsibility?
Do they pay? You know, if so, how much um? That, yeah.
Yeah, I think that that's why I I. I'm gonna send this back to personnel and C A C P and then they can.
Okay.
Do their, their research.
Yeah, sounds good.
Those answers off the top of my head. All I know is that. The pay hasn't been increased for ten years. And it's now more of a elitist of who can just, you know, deal with it as opposed to trying to get people that. Can offset some of their expenses. And so. That's my concern about it.
And also, we might. Maybe there's a way we could find out what concerns people do have. I mean, maybe we're, you know, I think it would be easy to. Um, assign that um, you know, the problem of of maybe more people not. Being interested in council to fees when it could be something entirely different because. Stoughton is such a volunteer community. So maybe there's something else. Maybe that, you know, that they feel they're missing some background or whatever. It'd be good to find out. Yeah. Thank you.
And thank you all for your discussion and openness with this. As I said, I didn't know where to go with it. I just know that. Salaries have not been. Changed for a good many years and that I don't like to devalue the work that we do. I know we're trying to right-size and I know we have a tight budget, but. Sometimes we also have to value what we do as well. And I mean, we put a lot of time and energy into everything. And even though it's to some, it's just a token. It's still uh. It still helps a lot of us though, too. So. Just putting it out there. Okay, Jamin, does anyone else have any other comments or? Mayor, did you have your mic on?
Yeah, I think we'll find there's gonna be some statutory things that we'll have to look at. So we may have to have the city attorney look at it. Um, I was just kind of looking at it briefly because. The way I interpret it is. If somebody's been elected, you can't. Uh, increase their wages until their next election. Uh, I don't think you can do it midterm is the way I'm understanding it. So I think there's gonna be some things like that that we have to look at.
Um, I don't know if that's true. I mean, Madison common council seems to increase their budget. And I don't. I don't remember them having to wait till they get reelected, so.
I I think the mayor is right on that, Regina. I I recall that very same thing. Uh. I believe that you have to, you know, you can pass it, but it doesn't. Go into effect for you until. You you are reelected if you chose, so choose to be reelected. And the reason for that is then it takes away the idea that. You are uh voting yourself a race. It 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 takes that out of the, out of the picture uh, sort of, you know, not completely, but it it it. It makes it a little bit more palatable. Not that we're getting a lot of money out of it, but.
Yeah, for the school district is different because. At the annual meeting, actually, people that live in the district can can vote on that and make that motion. So it's not just on the school board members to do that for themselves. So I I think, you know, it's gonna be. A conversation that. We can begin now if you'd like us to, if that's the direction you want to give us. And then we can take it to, you know, personnel and. And, you know, come up with the comparables and then uh city attorney opinion and. And what it would look like if we were to try to implement something.
No, I think that'd be good. I think I would like to send that. Personnel and. I think uh other people had suggested C A C P too, so. And Greg, did you have another comment? Your mic is on.
Nope, just scratching my back.
Okay. Good to know. All right. Uh, let's move on.
Sorry, just one second. I'm typing up the rest of the minutes here. Okay, sorry. Um, next one under the general, like I said, we'll just kind of go in order here. So the next one that would fall under this is judicial. Um, so not many changes here. Um, the judge's salary remains unchanged. Um, wages went up two point three two percent, benefits one point six six percent. Um, non-labor, we do, we reduced just slightly about sixteen hundred dollars just based on trends of what we've been seeing in actuality over the last three years. Um, so again, nothing too exciting here. Uh, but if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them. All right, moving on to legal. Um, this is one here where you're gonna see a big jump. Um, and again, this is just proposed at this point in time. This is on finance committee's agenda for next Tuesday. Um, we received revised rates from Stafford Rosenbaum. Um, if you remember last year, um. Kind of it got late in the year. Everybody was wrapped up with COVID. Um, Matt was a little busy. Um, kind of working out some other things that the city had him, so. Um, it was agreed to just kind of move forward with twenty one of the the rates that were in place at this point in time. This year Stafford did do a review um of what their rates are. Um, and. They have sent a new rate proposal proposal over. Um, so the intent is to take that in front of finance committee next Tuesday. Um, and get their take on it, kind of see what direction they want to move. Um, one of the options would be to go out to RFP for new legal services. Um, or accept the new rates that were proposed by Stafford Rosenbaum. Um, this one might be a little bit of a work in progress. Um, the current fee structure that we have right now is really. There, 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 there is hourly charges, but we also worked on, have a kind of a large fixed fee. Amount that is in there and they're basically changing this around to an actual kind of hourly rate type gig. Um, so. Matt and I worked together to kind of determine what would be an actual, what would be the actual impact on the general fund based on kind of what they've historically worked. And what the hours or rates they're proposing and things like that. So that's why we ended up with. Really, at the end of the day, the the top line of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, the seven thousand dollars is generally kind of the the. Off firms like Boardman Clark that we use kind of for personnel issues and things like that. So the top line is really what we're looking at for Attorney Dragney, um, and Attorney Schneider's time. Going forward. So this is kind of one of those things that the bump is there. I I guess committee of the whole could certainly wait for this to run through the process of. You know, finance council review and approval slash suggestion of what direction you want to go. Um, or I guess you could certainly make a recommendation tonight in terms of what direction you'd like to go.
Fred?
The a hundred and fifty thousand proposed budget. In looking at past years, that that's really a placeholder more than an actual. Precise expense, am I right? It could vary according to the needs.
Yeah, this, this is a challenging one to budget because. Um, you know, if you look at like twenty twenty, um. Twenty twenty was down, but um Stafford was doing a lot of work on like TIF work. Um, also doing a ton of work on COVID, which we kind of started moving to like a more, more of a contingency type account. To track separately under a new project number. And then we kind of reimburse ourselves with some of those federal COVID funds. So. It all kind of depends on the year and what they're actually working on. Um, again, this was just, you know, to your point, all their hunt, it it's kind of a, it's a placeholder and a. It, it's an educated guess, but you know, it's still at the end of the day, I guess, on what this might look like. Um, you know, we just don't know. We don't know what. What projects they'll be working on that can actually be charged back to maybe developers or or something like that. Um, so again, we're just, we're kind of estimating. Based on history of where the hours have been and what what might potentially hit the general fund at this point in time.
Yeah, I would just add a couple of things. You know, the, the attorneys are are kind of like the engineers where it's not just a one stop. You're getting a team. You know, I know Jamin mentioned Rachel, but obviously. We've had others that have helped us, whether it's with. Litigation on assessments or revocation hearing or uh. The census or property acquisition. And so, you know. This is, this is really budgeted for the entire team at Stafford, not just Matt or Rachel. And. You know, they provide a variety of services for us. So I mean, the easy thought would be is, you know, oh, jeez, let's just hire us. You know, an attorney, but if we were to do that, it would probably cost us even more because you'd have to à la carte for those specialty areas. So, you know, it's, it's a cost of doing business. Like Jamie mentioned, some of it is reimbursable. Through the TIFs, but it's really hard to to show that on the financials sometimes, especially in the budget. Um, and you know, there are some things we could do. To minimize the cost, but I think it would probably put us more at risk if we did that. I'd rather err. On having the city attorney in part of the discussion than not. And that's kind of been our approach and also we go try to get the city attorney in some discussions. Earlier than later to make sure that they're in the loop from the beginning, so we don't dig ourselves a hole.
The, I guess if I may inter- interject, council president.
Absolutely.
The conversation I had with Matt too was he, you know, be- because this is kind of moving more towards a, an hourly type structure, uh which. You know, if you think of professional services firms, whether it's engineering, accounting, whatever, that that's generally how these are based. And, you know, when I was at Baker Tilly. We were always kind of the redheaded stepchildren. Um, always being told, raise your revenue, raise your revenue, but at the same time, our client base doesn't have those deep pockets. So I I I kind of understand that Matt might actually be under some pressure to be doing this too, because the city may have been getting some discounted work for a number of years. Um, but he did also say by moving to kind of more of this hourly rate structure. Um. We can mitigate some of the impact, right? So if you find that um in any given week, the council agendas is low. There, there's not much on there. Nothing is contentious or whatever, pretty straightforward. Um, we can say, you know what, Matt, we don't need you on that weekly call. Or that the agenda call, or if you, you know, at at the same point, if if an agenda item is, or a council agenda is, is is pretty short. And it's just, you know, a slam dunk. We know we're not gonna need Matt. You know what, Matt, you don't need to attend councils. There, there, the city does have the ability to kind of make that call of when you want to have Matt available. And and when you really feel that, you know what, there's no way we need Matt. Um, I don't think we need to pay him, you know, whatever the hourly rate is to sit through a two-hour council meeting and not have to call on him once or whatever it is. So. Um, there, there is that opportunity, obvi- you know, obviously that would kind of be more up to the council president and the mayor to kind of make those decisions, but that. That opportunity does exist.
Fred, did you have a follow-up question?
No, that's a good explanation on uh. Not only the uh idea of hiring, the entire company gives you all the different uh. Uh specialties and also, you know, I guess it's unlikely, but sometimes you could maybe uh. Ask for no attendance at council meetings. You know, you could maybe uh package the, the council meetings in a way that we don't need legal help some nights. That makes sense.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Fred. Anybody else have any questions? Any none? I guess we can move on.
Okay, um, moving to the mayor's budget. Sorry, Mayor, I'm just gonna be fully transparent here. So the mayor's, the mayor's wage increase is is basically set. I I think it's by statute. And Director Gillingham does pull this information for us every single year. And it's at a specific point in time in terms of what CPI index looks like. I don't know the exact index that she pulls from. Um. But she gives us this every year. Um, and at the point in time that it's, it's set that the mayor's um salary will be. Salary increase will be set or increased. Um, it was at six percent. So that's why we're seeing the salaries go up by the six percent on this side of things. Um, benefits up more than the average of four point zero five percent and then. Um, benefits up more than the average of 4.05% and then the health and dental is up 4.63% with, which basically follows that, that 5% range. Um, that we saw. Um, on the nonlabor costs, we did kind of fine tune a few things and reduce them a little bit just based on trends. We were able to reduce those by about $1,700, give or take. Um, so we did see a total change of about 3.18% in total for the, the mayor's budget this year. So any questions on that one?
And the mayor doesn't get paid by the hour.
Yeah, what's your hourly rate, uh, on that one, Tim?
Uh, I don't know if it's a living wage. I haven't even, I don't even want to look. Kind of like you guys.
Yeah. I think I figured it out once for, for what amount of time I spent in it was less than a dollar an hour.
And for Greg, it keeps going down for you.
Yeah, it does.
Pretty soon you'll just pay to be on there.
Yeah, well, I guess so. Nope, that's good.
I guess we can move on.
Oh, sorry. Uh, moving to finance, um, you'll see I set this one up a little different. I do kind of have the finance department set up with total appropriations flowing down. Um, but then I do back out the, the taxi grant piece of it. Um, to kind of give you a little bit, you know, better picture of what the, the finance department really looks like. For right now, we just do have the taxi department. Uh, or taxi program, um, budgeted within the finance department at this point in time. Um, wages, we did see go up by about 7.5%. Again, that mainly relates to the restructure of, of kind of moving things back down to the utilities. Um, and how all of that worked out in terms of how things were being allocated to the utilities. Um, benefits were up about five and a half percent. Health and dental followed that 5% line of, and so we were at 4.75%. Uh, overall, we did scrub the nonlabor piece, um, pretty closely. We were able to reduce that by about 4.12%. Um, we've been finding some audit efficiencies and things like that, where we've been saving money over the last couple of years, um, office supplies, things like that. So we were able to find two nails a little bit. And make a few cuts there. Um, so we did see a total overall change of about 4.04% for the finance department. Um, the taxi grant, again, there might be. A last minute change in this, um, before this would potentially come in front of council for, uh, the public hearing and everything. This basically ends up being a, a one for one in revenues and expenditures. Um, but when we start off through this process, we don't actually, we're not actually, we don't actually finalize this till December. So this makes budgeting this really challenging. So we should kind of just look at this to. Max out the grant as much as possible, uh, within reason. And then like, like I mentioned in the presentation, the PowerPoint. We, we try to get that October invoice in as quickly as possible and kind of see what the, the ridership has looked like, what the hours are going to look like. We know what the rates are going to be. Um, and really kind of fine tune this on the, the, the budget side of things. Now, I, I think it's pretty close. I don't see this changing, you know, materially, but it, it, it might change some. Um, but again, that's kind of going to be a last minute, um, change, you know, I guess kind of internally. Um, if, if we find that there's some dollar amounts left over, I don't, I don't think it'll be a material amount, but it might, might squeeze out a couple of thousand here or there or something like that. Um, we may find that it doesn't change at all, but again, that it, it's kind of challenging with the timing of this program because we don't finalize anything in terms of even application process until December. Um, so we'll, we'll keep an eye on that. Um, it, it might not change. It might change a little bit. Um, so we'll keep an eye on it. But again, from a, from an overall bottom line standpoint. It doesn't really impact the general fund at all because it, it does almost end up being a one for one in revenues. Um, and expenditures. So between the fair revenues and the grand dollars, that basically offsets the cost that the city has to budget at this point in time. Um, so with that, um, any questions on the finance department?
You may have any questions? I don't know, Jamie, can we trust you to do the finance department's budget? Just throwing it up.
I don't know.
I was just trying to put some, you know, it's a pretty, you know. Pretty quiet audience today. If it wasn't for Fred, I'd be talking to myself.
We've been pretty close budget to actual lately. So we do, we do keep an eye on it as much as possible.
I'm sure you do. I, I think it looks great. Thank you.
Okay, there is not much left in terms of general fund. Um, so here is assessor. Um, so you can see the budget, we brought it down $500, um, on the, the first outside service contracts. The first one is our actual kind of municipal advisor. Um, accurate appraisal. Um, and then the bottom one is the DOR actually does all of the manufacturing assessments for us and we get a bill for that as well through. Um, the top one for accurate, we, we were able to reduce that by $500 and that's based on an actual contract amount. So this one should pretty well shake out to. To, to actual numbers at the end of the year. So. Um, slight reduction, not much, but we were able to reduce it a little bit. So any questions on the assessor?
Here's like, there isn't.
Okay, and the last general fund, nope. Department is our community commitment. Um, this one has not had a ton of activity over the past few years. Really, the only thing we've been budgeting, um, has been the fireworks, the $5,000 fireworks contribution. So that's all that's in there this year as well. So that is it for that one, unless anyone has any questions on it. Hey. So with that, um, we've covered all of the general fund. Um, I guess I'll, after I get through my spiel, I'll kind of go back and touch on a high level overview again of where the department or the general fund is bottom line wise. Uh, but we've touched on every single department within the general fund. Um. We have touched on Fund 215, which is the library. We've touched on Fund 224, which is stormwater. And we've touched on Fund 603, which is EMS. Um, historically, we haven't really covered any of the, the TIFs or capital projects type funds. Those would really be kind of the only other major funds. That we would maybe want to cover through this. Again, the, the capital project side of things and even the TIFs to a point. Are, are scrubbed pretty closely at the CIP budget committee meetings, but I did want to let you know that there's a few out there that we don't talk about in these budget workshops, but I'd be certainly happy to. Um, touch on one or all of them. If anybody has any questions, comments, concerns on them or wants to see them.
And I would just add that, uh, once we get our new finance director on board, we do anticipate, uh, putting together the budget for stolen utilities as well.
Anybody have any comments or people want to see the extra budgets?
Um, the, the entire CIP budget will be included, um, as like a separate line item in the November 9th agenda. There will be the, the packet and all of the projects will be listed and everything. So you'll. You'll get that ahead of time to see it. Um, and that, that really would cover the remaining funds that we didn't touch here. So.
Fred, you have your mic on? Did you have an extra question?
Not a question. I would just like to say that, uh, after all of the committee. Uh, gatherings we've had and seeing all the information Jamie's assembled, I'd like to thank him for. An incredibly large amount of work that he's done, really, and very, very easy to understand. Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you, Fred.
Thank you.
I, I see Rodney clapping too. Yes, thank you very much. And all the, all the, the staff, the, the leadership team and there, I know this is a lot of, a lot of work, a lot of hours. And thank you, Jamie. And the key thing, Jamie, what you do that hasn't since my tenure on here is that. You explain it so well with graphs, visuals, auditory, it, it's, I think, why we're not seeing as many questions as. In previous years before your time is that. You presented in such a way that it makes sense and we can understand that our questions are actually. Answered within your explanations and in the spreadsheet. So. Thank you. I think that saves a lot of time and angst with the council. And Jean, I see your mic is on.
Just wanted to thank you, Jamie, for your transparency and your excellent teaching and educating of us. Uh, for all of the other little details that I know I might be involved with, I'm well aware of where those are in the budget. I don't need to see those details. And you too, like EMS, you are a rock star.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, it, not to prolong this, but it really is a team effort. I mean, the department has really put a lot of time in on the front end. Um, you know, I kind of. Show up in the middle and take all the credit at the end. So they, they put in a ton of time on this too. So I do appreciate all the hard work and, you know, they're flexible too. They meet with us. Um, honestly, I was a little bit behind this year. Um, everybody kind of adjusted their, their schedules. We had a number of department heads, you know, Jim Ramsey, Dan Glenn, a couple of other folks. Um, called into these meetings while they're on vacation just to keep things moving. So it, it really is a team effort. So. Um, that's where we're at. Um, Council President Hirsch, if you don't mind, I'll just kind of give a very high level summary of where we're at and kind of still what's left. Um. And then we'll kind of leave it up to the committee to hold to determine where to go. So. Um, this last bit, this won't take long at all. Um, kind of overall, really, here's just the condensed. Income statement, if you will, I'll kind of just shade this column here. That's the 22 budget line item that we're looking at. Um, you know, at the end of the day, we're showing a, a fund 100, um, the general fund of a profit of about $25,888. Um, when we wrap in all the other funds for audit purposes, which the bulk of these expenditures do relate to potential retirements next year. But again. And not to repeat myself, but, um. These costs are funded already. We've been building up the fund balance in that fund 250. You can see there, that's what we call our sick leave account is to pay out the sick leave balance when folks retire. We've been funding that over the past few years. We're, we're going to see expenses next year, but we have funding in that fund 250. So. We, it's potentially, it's potential that we, we will register a overall loss next year. If everything works out the way it does on paper, there's potential to, to register a loss in terms of. Audit purposes, but really it won't eat into any unassigned fund balance because we've already kind of set those aside. Uh, within the sick leave reserve fund and have cash available there to pay these. So we've been kind of expecting. Uh, that we're going to start seeing a pickup in, in retirements over the next couple of years. So we've been trying to get ahead of that a little bit. Um. We're at the, so the, the expenditure restraint, you know, again, we're at that 3.79, we have about $1,146 left. Um, in terms of. Open items, really, um, that's it. Um. I guess we'll get your take on the, the wage increase. Um. I feel like the staffing requests are all good. There weren't, weren't a ton of questions on those. Um, the expenditure restraint parameter, I'll keep an eye on. Uh, the billing to the township should be done because there was no changes to the fire budget. Um, once that final statement of assessment comes in from the DOR, I'll, I'll, I'll calculate what the final mail rate is and you'll see all that in the final budget memo and everything. Um, hopefully it's not too far off from what we're projecting, but, um, if it is, we'll make adjustments on the debt service side of things. Um, and then we'll take one last look at the transit budget and that's that. Then we're all done. So I think in terms of overall objectives. This is where we are at. So, um, I will stop talking and, um, kind of let Council President Hirsch determine, uh, what decisions need to be made and whether or not we need the final workshop. So thanks, everyone.
Oh, Jamie, were we going to go over the confirmation of the different personnel committee recommendations? Was that? Did I miss that or?
Um, but it's totally up to you and how you want to approach this. Now they're all, they're all basically built into the budget. Um, at this point in time, and if you're okay with the budget and want to recommend it to council as is, I would say inherently you're approving those staffing requests. Um, again, if you want to speak to any of the, or, or hear about any of the other requests that were maybe made that didn't make the cut. Um, I would maybe leave that up to a member of the personnel committee to touch on or even their swab.
Yeah, maybe just a brief review of what was approved and what wasn't, and maybe the process. I know, oh, AJ isn't here today. Um. Yeah, Jean also says review of who was in the process would have been nice. So if somebody from the, I know Lisa isn't here tonight, but I think there's other people from personnel that can speak to it.
What do you want to hear?
Well, we'd like, I think ideally we'd like to know, um, what the process was and what was, uh, the deciding and what was left out.
All right. Process was each department had, uh, presented their needs. And the reason for them and how they were going to go about budgeting for it. Uh, of those. Parks had asked for a $44,000 increase. Public Works, uh. Had requested something and that was basically absorbed and approved in the fact that there's no, it was, uh. It didn't affect the budget at all, the way they worked it out. So it was basically moot point. Uh, IT was, uh, was discussed because of the fact that we have one person. Uh, and then that person, uh, basically saved our bacon. When we had our, uh, our network attack and. Most of us don't realize that he was also having medical issues at the time and had worked through those. Uh, and it just showed us how precarious we actually were. And so that was a deciding factor. Police department asked for an additional officer and, uh, some CSO officer also. We decided that, uh, they basically effectively that the police department had given. Uh, had, had gotten a, another officer when the, uh. High school officer was basically not used at all at the high school. And we picked up the, the last of its salary and it was being, it was already absorbed into the police department. Uh, library fund, uh, the library asked for some positions, the library fund had, uh. 52,000 extra dollars in their, their budget that they, that, that is decided on by the, uh, library board. And that they could allocate with, with that, with that money for that, for those positions. The deputy clerk. Asked for $26,790 and, uh, decided that. Because of the fluctuation and how that. How that position in, in, within that department is needed. Uh, due to the amount of elections and basically that's what it was, a lot that could be picked up by cross-training receptionists to help out. And then we had a fire tech, which was a 10, 10 additional hours. Uh, that, that position was. Already considered a full-time position. So there was no extra benefits that were taken, added to it. And it was, it was definitely needed. So that is how, and then there was the, um. Uh, position for HR, which is basically inundated by. An incredible amount of work and not being able to, and, and it's still functioning, but barely. Uh, and to alleviate some of the pressure on them. Everything was then prioritized where we gave IT, uh, the number one. And followed by. The HR and that's how we got to where we are.
Go ahead, Fred.
Um, I, I think the, um, the list that Tom mentioned there, starting with the IT position, HR, and then rounding that fire department up to full time.
Thank you, Fred.
Had pretty much our full support. The, uh, parks and rec situation, we were a little less certain, I would say. The uh Parks and Rec situation, we were a little less certain, I would say, because the position that would be created would actually be replacing three part-time people uh with a wide range of needs. The uh mud hole attendant or supervisor, uh someone who would join the uh staff in the youth center in the afternoon and then like an administrative assistant who would uh oh, you know, with a variety of things uh from setting up displays to taking things down or whatever it might be. Uh, we had some reservation, or at least I did, I guess, uh about whether or not one position could cover all three of those areas quite well. So that's why we made that the fourth position uh as far as a priority. And um I I think it would be worthy of some discussion a at the next level to see if we think that uh we need to actually consolidate those three part-time jobs and replace it with one person or if the one person is actually the better answer.
Yeah, I I would just say those are excellent summaries. Um, some of the conversations will continue. As Tom mentioned, we're looking to delegate some of the responsibilities to the deputy clerk to the front office staff. Uh, we do have somebody that we hired on a limited term basis to help us, um, you know, get caught up and and provide us an opportunity to get the deputy clerk trained. Um, she's going through election training right now. Um, some of the conversations with the uh Park and Rec position is recognizing, you know, there is a labor shortage and it's hard to recruit for part-time positions, especially um, you know, the wages right now have really increased due to the competition for employees. So that was all part of the thought about trying to consolidate them positions to try to make it more attractive. I would anticipate that that conversation and possibly the conversation with the CSO position and how some restructuring might occur to be able to, you know, continue those conversations. And you know, the there was a couple of departments that did not have a request and that was the senior center and the um the Opera House and the planning department um as well as uh EMS. And, you know, recognizing that, you know, as the community grows, we're going to have to continue to look at, you know, additional needs moving forward and and how we can, you know, work that into these budgets is, you know, it's a challenge. Uh, but, you know, I think that the Personnel Committee um did a solid job in their analysis. I pretty much agreed. You know, I struggled with the clerk position, but we're gonna we're gonna make it work. Um, and, you know, I think the last couple of years, I think we've pretty much landed in the same spot. And we'll continue to, you know, go through the process and and see what comes out. Um, you know, it's the labor issue, I I don't know if this is going to be a temporary or this is going to be the new norm. If it's a new norm, um, you know, it's it's going to get it to be even more challenging for next year, but, you know, we'll we'll do what we can in order to, you know, provide the services that we do. I know we all take pride in the services that we provide to community in having and retaining, you know, quality people is is important to do that.
Absolutely. Jean, you had a couple of chats, comments, I think you need to localize those.
Thank, thank you for the summary. It's it's helpful because I just um wanting to respect the closed session process, but yet um, many departments working hard for these limited funds. And so the more transparent we can be, the better, I think. Um, and the better uh decision-making that's respected, I think that's great. So even if there's a nice summary on the committee of the whole minutes of this meeting of this part of this, that that would be great. Um, I just, I hadn't seen all of it compact and in one place and I've had a lot going on. And so I'm just trying to uh take the wisdom from this.
So Jean, would you like to send it back to Personnel to have them summarize how the decision decisions should make? I think it would be helpful.
There was really good discussion just now. If that's reflected in our minutes, that wouldn't be necessary. Um, if it's not captured, perhaps they could just append something. I think that would be helpful. There's so much to the budget. This is really valued by a lot of folks.
Absolutely.
Keep in mind, Regina and and Jean alluded to it, is that some of the positions that we talked about, we didn't, it was a closed session because some of these positions are already um there are employees in some of these positions already, even though they may be part-time. So what you ask for in public is going to be very limited.
Right, and we're in public right now. So yes, and so um, I think I was looking with respect to process and major concerns as opposed to um you know, the behind the scenes talk about how you rate things. So I I guess that was what I was more, you know, looking for. Um, Greg, did you have your hand up?
Uh, yeah, I did. Uh, I was just going to ask about the uh CSO or a PSO and uh Mayor Swobly touched on it, so I'm uh I'm fine.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions or concerns? Okay, that's, I think the next item is um Jamin, can you bring up the agenda or the the slide that you started with at the beginning about what is left? I think there was another one. First, there you go. Whoop, you just went past it. Nope, not that one. Keep going. The one that you had, the three columns of what we all were discussing and each date and what could possibly be doing the next. There you go. So with this, what we've covered in last week and this week, what are your people's thoughts about meeting next? What is it, the Thursday? Um, to review any other changes, finalize a budget? What are people's thoughts? Jamin, I'm going to open it up to you first to tell me what you think, if you foresee any other changes or um items between now and then.
I really don't. Um, yeah, I guess it would be up to the committee to determine how much um, I guess, how long of a leash you want to. I I mean, at the end of the day, it's the mayor's budgets, but you know, if if you feel comfortable enough with any immaterial changes that may come about either through the transit budget um or potentially with the mill rate, um, once we get that final statement of assessment and how I will use. We have some excess funds in our debt service fund and I usually play with those to just kind of more stabilize that mill rate. Um, I don't foresee that being a material amount at all. Um, I think any changes we make will be in the couple thousand dollar range if anything. So you could either give us the leeway to kind of make those changes and not report back on the twenty-eighth, or if if we do make any any changes at all, you could ask to have a a meeting on the twenty-eighth. I guess it's it's up to the committee how they want to proceed. As of right now, based on the conversations you've had, I don't, I don't I I don't see any changes coming out of this committee that haven't already been made. Um, you know, we looked at the utilities and fuel and made those changes. That's the only one that I can really think of at this point in time unless I missed something. Um, so my initial thought is that a meeting isn't necessary on the twenty-eighth. Um, again, we have a few things to kind of wrap up like we generally do every year, but I I just don't see those changes being major. And if you want to kind of leave it up to, you know, the mayor's discretion to say, you know, what, these changes are small enough, let's just hit and move on and present it on the night. I think that would be sufficient. Um, or if he thinks the changes are big enough that we maybe need to have another meeting, then we can, you know, kind of make that call early next week, I guess. Those are my thoughts.
So you're thinking that we'll know something more by early next week if if we definitely need to have another meeting or if things change dramatically.
Yeah, and I can't guarantee we'd even know that. Um, you know, some of these things, and this is kind of the struggle with trying to squeeze in the committee, the whole workshops and some of the information that sometimes becomes available like the week before or we have the public hearing. Um, some of those were mostly the the final statement of assessment. We really never know when we're going to get that. Um, so I can't guarantee there won't be any changes, but I can say if if we know of any changes by, say, like, you know, Monday, close of business, we'll let everybody know that the meeting's on. Um, if we don't know anything and nothing changes by then, I I think um, I I don't, I don't think it's necessary to have a meeting on the twenty-eighth.
I agree. Is it anybody else dying to have another meeting? Fred, was that you? Your hand is up?
You're muted.
I thought the responses to most questions that were posed were sufficient to show us a fairly clear path forward. I I don't think we would need uh or would have a great deal to talk over a week from now. And we could just go to the ninth.
Jean, your your mic is on. You have another comment? No, that was a mistake.
Regina, why don't uh why don't we uh make a a motion then to uh accept the mayor's budget as presented and and uh recommend to council?
The minor change necessary.
Pardon, Tom?
With allowances for minor changes as necessary.
Yes, I'll accept that.
Joyce, you had a, your mic is on.
Oh, no, I'm just, I'm just prepared to vote.
Okay, Fred?
Well, that would, that would be my motion then.
Okay.
Second.
I'm now prepared to vote.
Okay, all right. Uh, so uh Greg has put a motion forward with the suggestions from Tom that we move this or accept the budget as presented and move it to the the full council on the ninth add it with, you know, that they could be added in, would you say, minor changes if necessary, Tom? Is that the word?
That that Jamin had talked about.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have any comments on that? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any oppose? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries. So we'll see you on uh for that, the budget on the ninth unless something drastically happens that we have to have another meeting next week. But if it's just minor stuff, we'll let you guys handle it.
Sure. Yeah, I'll make sure I communicate that or the mayor communicates it, whatever changes, if any are made, we'll we'll communicate that during the executive presentation on the night. So you're you're aware of them.
And also, I guess, if you know by next Tuesday during council meeting, maybe during communications, you could update us too if there's something that's majorly changed.
Just want to say uh thank you, Mayor, for the solid, solid budget.
Thank you. Obviously, like Jamin says, a team effort. Certainly appreciate uh council feedback and support.
Again, thank you, everybody, for showing up tonight. Thank you, all the directors, the mayor. All your hard work is greatly appreciated. This has been uh painless as opposed to previous years. So thank you. I did, I appreciate not being put in pain. So thank you. Um, I guess the last thing is uh motion to adjourn if somebody wants to actually leave.
I move, we adjourn.
I'll second Fred's motion.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
I can't imagine any opposing. Thank you again for everybody for your time. Take care, have a good week, rest of your week. See you next Tuesday.
Good night, all.
Good one, everyone.
Good night. Good night.